Everyone, welcome to this special edition of the Columbus City Council, Dublin City Council meeting on, yeah, Columbus, I got all confused on my way home. January 9th. So, John, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with the items on the agenda this evening, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the tragic loss of two Dublin post office employees. We sometimes take for granted the dedication and service to our community that our postal employees provide. They truly embody the creed. Neither snow nor rain nor heat nor gloom of night stays these couriers from the swift completion of their appointed rounds. We continue to offer sincere condolences to the families and to the friends of Postmaster Ginger Ballard and postal supervisor Lance Maurice Herrera Dempsey. We also extend our thoughts and compassion to their fellow post office employees and to their letter carriers who have been deeply impacted by this tragedy, and we would like to recognize and honor their memories with a brief moment of silence. Thank you. So, now we are going to do the oath of office of our four Ward representatives. How are we going to do that, Anne?
You can put your hand up front and take a microphone.
One at a time?
Yeah.
Mr. Peterson, do you repeat after me? I Gregory S. Peterson.
I Gregory S. Peterson.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute.
The duties as a council member of the city of Dublin.
The duties of a council member of the city of Dublin.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the United States and of the state of Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the city of Dublin, Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the city of Dublin, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God. Who's next?
Jane.
I would like my children and grandchildren to come up and their significant others. You get extra class credit for this. That's right. I'm Italian, there's a lot of them. Oh, John? Yeah, you count. Did we get everybody? Where's, okay, I think we do. Oh, this is my significant other. I'm ready.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I Jane E. Fox do solemnly swear.
I Jane E. Fox do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties as council member of the city of Dublin.
That I will faithfully execute the duties as council member of city of Dublin.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the city of Dublin, Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the city of Dublin, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Is that my, this one?
Ah, Jane.
Yep. Jane.
Where do I say?
Right there.
John? Yeah?
You're welcome, honey. I don't know, not after the day I am here. Welcome.
This is super, I've never done this before. I'm very excited. I John G. Reiner do solemnly swear.
I John G. Reiner do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties as council member of the city of Dublin.
That I will faithfully execute the duties as council member of the city of Dublin.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the city of Dublin, Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the city of Dublin, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Kathy, I believe you're up.
Would you raise your right hand? And please repeat after me. I Kathy DeRosa.
I Kathy DeRosa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties as council member.
The duties as council member.
Of the city of Dublin.
The city of Dublin.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter.
And the ordinances and charter.
Of the city of Dublin, Ohio.
Of the city of Dublin, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And I'm waving to my children.
Okay, welcome everyone. I would call back to order the meeting of Dublin City Council January the ninth. We have taken care of some housekeeping matters back in the back and Mike, are there any motions you would like the council to entertain?
You bet. I'd like to make a motion to elect Craig Peterson as mayor, nominate him for two-year term.
Mr. Keenan?
That'd probably be appropriate.
That'd probably be appropriate.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Thank you. Mike?
I would like to nominate Chris Amaras Grooms for a two-year term as vice mayor.
A second.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amaras Grooms?
Abstain.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes. Very good.
Okay, we are going to do the oaths of those who office and write. This is my daughter Tatum. She was the first, my first go-around on council. She was born during my first term, and she's now seventeen years old. So, and this is Zach. He was born at some point. Come on up. And he's our pride and joy. We never updated our wills, so he's listed as a future issue. You hold that.
Of the city of Dublin.
Of the city of Dublin.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve?
Preserve.
Protect?
Protect.
And defend the constitution.
And defend the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And state of Ohio.
The state of Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the city of Dublin.
And the ordinances and charter of the city of Dublin.
Ohio.
Ohio.
So help God.
So help God. That's it.
Chrissy, I was standing where you are thirty-four years ago. And I appreciate what you've done, what you're gonna do with your community, and I'm really pleased to be here. But I ask you now, do I, Chris Amaras?
I, Chris Amaras.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties as vice mayor?
Duties of vice mayor.
Of the city of Dublin?
Of the city of Dublin.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The constitution of the United States?
The constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio?
And the state of Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter?
And ordinances and charter.
Of the city of Dublin, Ohio?
Of the city of Dublin, Ohio.
So help God.
And this is my neighbor Kevin. It's our oldest timer and our oldest caller.
Thank you. Okay, thanks everyone. We're gonna take a brief recess. How long do we anticipate this takes to take the official city council photo?
Ten minutes?
Seven minutes. I'll take it. Seven minutes. We'll be back in seven minutes.
Okay, back to business. Citizen comments, this is the portion of the agenda where if any citizen would like to make a comment on anything that is not on the agenda, they are perfectly welcome to do so, and I will start with Nora. And you're gonna have to help me with your last name, I want to get it right. Is it Fayazi?
Fayazi, yeah.
Fayazi, how about that? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Maynard, and I live at 7903 Wiltshire Court. I would like to first congratulate the new council. Congratulations.
Good evening, council. My name is Nora Fayazi, and I live at 420 Calde Court. I too would like to congratulate the new council and senior leadership. We're here tonight to talk about the Second Annual Dublin Sunday Supper.
Walter Joe Nyheart. Joe, as he was called, longtime resident of Dublin and a member of the Dublin Community Church, passed away in July of 2013 at the young age of eighty-four. Joe was a road and bridge builder, both in his long career as a civil engineer and in his life of service to his family, his church, his community, and to his country. Joe's personal charge came straight from Isaiah, to make rough places smooth and the crooked places straight. Joe is the reason we are here tonight. In 2003, Joe decided it was time for Dublin to have a community celebration in honor of Dr. King. Joe solicited church members, neighbors, city officers, and one day, Joe contacted Dublin City School Central Office, and the woman Joe spoke to that day was Bridget Dritz. Bridget is here tonight. Together, Joe and Bridget began their journey recruiting members of the community to join together in their efforts to honor Dr. King. In 2004, Dublin hosted the very first annual community celebration in honor of Dr. King at the Dublin Community Church. In 2008, Joe and Bridget recruited me. As a Dublin resident, then the president of the Dublin Parents of Black Students Association, and a teacher at Dublin Kaufman High School, I was honored to join this community committee called the Martin Luther King Community Remembrance Committee. Our annual program included student speakers, gospel music, dance, and art. With the advent of Sunday Supper, we have decided to join forces with the Dublin Teen Corps and host Sunday Supper.
Inspired by Dr. King's vision of people from diverse backgrounds interacting on personal levels, Sunday Supper encourages people to share a meal and discuss issues that affect their communities. This year's theme is respect. We will be at the Dublin Rec Center on Sunday, January fourteenth at six p.m. This year will be a bit more like a potluck roundtable kind of situation where we'll ask every attendee to self-identify with the kind of category such as race, gender, nationality, to ensure that every table will be representative of our diverse community. Participants will leave with toolkits that will show them how to host some kind of roundtable discussion such as this in their own community to continue the conversation in their own social circles.
Steve Francis, a student, ma'am, excuse me, a Dublin resident and chief diversity officer for the city of Columbus, will once again facilitate this large group discussion, and we will close the evening with gospel music. I can only imagine tonight that Joe Nyheart is shining down and looking at us and remembering the saying, "Make the rough places straight," and the, I mean, "The rough places smooth and the crooked places straighter."
If you have any questions, we'll gladly answer them, or you can contact Christine Nardakia for more information. We just really wanted to thank the city of Dublin for its continued support to have this community conversation and hope to see all of you at this important event.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it was a great event last year. I know several city council people showed up, and is it, and I, excuse me if you said this, but is it Sayota High School again? Is it the?
No, this year it's the Rec Center.
Oh, with the Rec. Okay, great. Thank you for that. Council, have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. I'm sure it'll be a fantastic event. Okay, moving on to a place where it would be, normally would be, our consent agenda. We are gonna do two separate items, approval of minutes of the December fourth, 2017 regular meeting. I will accept the new members' request to recuse themselves from the vote, and I would make a motion that we approve those minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And under now what is the correspondence section of the agenda, notice of legislative authority, Anne.
Mr. Rosa?
Well, I don't know whether you needed to read the.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is, um, this is a notice regarding a new D five liquor permit for Penns Mechanical located at sixty-five forty-two, sixty-five fifty-eight Riverside Drive, building B one.
Does council have any questions, Dana? Is that appropriate? I mean, I don't know if there are any issues that council would have on this.
Yeah, we typically handle these under consent, and it's just notification that they've applied for the D five liquor permit, and if there's any history of liquor violations, that's when you would typically request a hearing, and there are no such violations.
Okay, great. I make a motion then to accept notice without requesting a hearing on the issuance of a permit. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anne?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Second reading, public hearing ordinances, ordinance eighty-six dash seventeen, Anne.
Res zoning approximately five point eight six acres from PCD Planned Commerce District to PUD Planned Unit Development District, Crown Campus for an Amendment to the approved development text to increase the permitted density and to comprehensively update sign provisions.
Oh, no, this is gonna be the maiden voyage of our new technology.
No, bear with us.
Really have no idea what's gonna happen here. Well, Mike, you're in for a little surprise then, I think. And just so everyone knows, Dana, we have screens that have the, those two screens have the same thing, right? And we have a screen that has the same thing.
Most, most of the time.
Most of the time. Okay. Even further.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. As you may recall, ordinance eighty-six seventeen was before council at the December fourth meeting. This evening is request for approval of a rezoning. This is a rezoning with a final development plan, which the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve, so there's a bit more detail with this application than you would typically review. As you'll recall, the site is located south of Mercedes Drive and north of Perimeter Loop Road. It's approximately five point eight six acres. That is for rezoning with a request for increased density within the allowance of the community plan, and then also a comprehensive sign package. Council was supportive of the proposal as reviewed back in December and generally appreciated the architectural updates. There were a few questions with respect to tree replacement and then future sign modifications. Staff has worked with the applicant to address those and is recommending two additional conditions. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of this rezoning with no conditions, and the conditions that appear on the screen this evening are intended to address both tree transplanting and then also any modifications to future signs would have to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission versus administrative approvals that might be allowed by the code. Be happy to answer any questions the council has this evening.
Questions from council?
You got my two with these conditions, so I really appreciate working with that and for the applicant. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Hearing done, Anne.
Ms. Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-seven dash seventeen, Anne.
Accepting the regular annexation of forty-four point zero acres, more or less, from Jerome Township, Union County to the city of Dublin. The petitioners are Roger Warren Gordon and Denise Ann Gordon.
Dana?
Good evening, council members. This is second reading. We went over this briefly at the first reading. Union County Commissioners approved this annexation on May twenty-fifth, 2017. Under the Ohio Revised Code sections that pertain to annexations, the clerk has to keep the transcript, hold the transcript for sixty days. This period was extended because Jerome Township appealed the county commissioner's approval. Jerome Township dismissed that appeal on November seventh, 2017, and no litigation is currently outstanding. The next step in the process is for council to consider the annexation acceptance ordinance, which is before you tonight. Once the property is annexed to Dublin, it will be automatically rezoned to the R rural district. If the property owners desire to do anything other than that, they'll have to go through a full rezoning process. Staff recommends approval of this ordinance tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Hearing, John?
None.
None, Anne?
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Peter, Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Introduction of first reading's ordinance oh-one dash eighteen, Anne.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a real estate and transfer of property agreement and other necessary documents with Delta Energy Holdings LLC for the purchase of property located at five 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 perimeter drive.
I'll introduce it.
Thanks, Christina. Donna?
Good evening, members of council. Before you this evening is an ordinance for the proposed acquisition of property located at fifty-five fifty-five perimeter drive for municipal purposes. With council's approval of the term sheet at your last meeting on December fourth, legal staff has pursued due diligence and drafted the necessary documents to facilitate the purchase. As noted in your memo, the property totals two point five eight acres and is improved with a two-story building constructed in 2010 and comprising of approximately twenty thousand square feet in area. Immediately adjacent to this property is an undeveloped city-owned parcel, also consisting of approximately two point five acres, and bordered on the west by property that supports the Justice Center. In total, the city currently owns one hundred eight acres that surrounds and is adjacent to the building and property currently proposed for acquisition at fifty-five fifty-five perimeter drive. While further study is required to fully understand the city's programmatic and future facility needs, the availability of this property provides a unique opportunity to fulfill the city's nineteen ninety-seven and two thousand seven community plan objectives. As outlined in both studies, the ability to locate City Hall in close proximity to the Justice Center enables the creation of a municipal complex that serves as a gateway to Kaufman Park and creates a locus for administrative and safety services. The city-owned acreage immediately to the west also facilitates future development and expansion. Thank you for your consideration of this proposed acquisition, and I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Okay.
I would like to make just a couple of comments on this. We've talked about City Hall building for many, many years in our CIP, as those of us who've been here know. And I asked Angel Mumma for some figures today, and I just thought I'd share this because I think it's important to the discussion. We first put this on the CIP in 2002, had it out through oh-six, and we programmed five hundred and forty thousand dollars for design. Did not include any construction, was not programmed at that time. And then, subsequent to that, in 2003, we programmed sixteen point five million that would have been programmed out in seven. And this kind of progressed each CIP period. In oh-four, it went to eighteen million; in oh-five, it went to nineteen point three million; in oh-six, we left it at nineteen point three million; and in oh-seven, we decided to pull it totally off. Many cities want to build a palace to themselves, and I know that the councils at that time felt that it was very important that we use that money for infrastructure, roadways, and other things that were more important at that particular point in time. So the time has come now for us to finally build that out, get building, and I think we collectively felt that the buying a existing building was, was far more economical and efficient than to try and build, build out new, as you can see from these figures that we used, used in the CIP. It's not just construction costs, land is very expensive here in Dublin, and the kind of campus we would need would be, would be significant. So I'm really glad to see that we finally have worked to pull all of our groups together. The synergy of having everybody work together is an important matter that we've talked about, and we finally are there with this, with this legislation, so that's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions from council? Okay, Donna, we'll see you back on January the twenty-second.
Thank you.
Introduction, public hearing vote on resolutions, resolution oh-one dash eighteen, Anne.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council regarding wages, hours, and terms and conditions of employment for employees within the Communications Technician Bargaining Unit.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Christina. Homer?
Good evening, members of council. As introduced, this resolution authorizes the city manager to enter into a new collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, who represents all of our communications technicians that work in the Northwest Regional Emergency Communication Center. The contract with the FOP LLC is a mature one, and negotiations went very smoothly. None of the updates are out of the ordinary and are consistent with the rest of the city. The economic updates appear in the staff memo, and I am here to answer any questions you may have, and we recommend passage or approval of the.
Questions from council?
I just, I had a quick, quick one, and this, the health insurance, the healthcare healthy by choice terms in this contract, that brings the entire city under one umbrella now, finally?
Yes, we are all on the same sheet of music now.
And we were not on the same sheet of music, and we now are, and that's an important part of getting that program together, so thank you for that.
Very well.
Any other questions from council? Hearing done, Anne.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Resolution oh-two dash eighteen, Anne.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Delaware City Prosecutor's Office to handle prosecution of cases in Delaware Municipal Court at a rate of two hundred and ten dollars per case. In 2017, we only had three cases, so there's usually a minimal amount of case activity, and staff would recommend approval of this contract.
Questions from council? Hearing done, Anne.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Resolution oh-three dash eighteen, Anne.
Authorizing the city manager to contribute funds to the Northwest thirty-three Innovation Corridor Council of Governments.
I'll introduce it.
David?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This resolution would authorize contributions to the Northwest thirty-three corridor, Innovation Corridor Council of Governments. These costs are related to the federal smart mobility grant that the COG, the COG has been awarded. This project would enhance and expand the fiber connectivity throughout the Innovation Corridor, and all of these costs that were talked about today are, are split evenly amongst the three primary entities of the COG. The total contribution this year would be four hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Of that, two hundred and sixteen thousand would be reimbursed to us at the conclusion of the grant through the refund. I'm available for any questions related to.
Questions from council?
Do you know when that grant is concluded?
The, the, at the last COG meeting, we had that discussion, and we anticipate the end of the year for it to be concluded, but it very likely could go into the early part of next year.
Oh, so yet, possibly in eighteen, but.
Possibly.
First quarter nineteen, maybe.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Hearing done, Anne.
I'm Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Under the other portion of the agenda, the tree replacement waiver policy, Community Development Committee recommendation, Claudia.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Congratulations, congratulations, Mayor, the remaining members of council for your appointments. We, as staff, have rectified our copying issues and our clerical issues. We are here tonight apologizing and hoping that everything in front of you is what we discussed at the committee meeting we had in October and are ready to approve tonight for our tree replacement fee waiver policy going forward.
So all of the issues raised at the last council meeting have been addressed?
Yes, we've had some issues with copying, we had some issues with fixing all the clerical mistakes. We're here in confidence that we've addressed all of those tonight.
Great. Questions from council?
I just have one question. Under three waiver submittal requirements, it says tree survey must include. It's a little inconsistent with the balance of the nomenclature. Could we make that tree survey including, and that would make it consistent with the other bullet points as listed, but other than that, it looks great, and thank you so much for.
We could certainly do that.
Do you know where she's talking about?
Yes, I.
Figure it out.
Noticed it just now, yes.
Any other questions, Chris?
Nope, looks great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the policy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anne?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Counsel Committee reports. Mike?
Yeah, do, we want to do these one at a time? I guess, we'll do it by committee, I think, be the easiest way, so that you can keep track of it. So I'll make a motion to approve the following standing committee assignments, and we will begin with administrative, and the chair for the administrative committee will be Chris, I will be a member, and Jane will be a member. So, you want to do a motion on that? Do you need motions for this, or?
Do you want to just read all the?
I'll just go through them, and then we'll do it together, okay? So then we have the Community Development Committee. The chair will be John, members will be Chris and Kathy. The Finance Committee, the chair will be myself, and members will be Kathy and Christina. Public Services Committee, the chair will be Christine, members will be John and Jane. Do we want to go, so that's the standing committee, so I need a second, that's my motion to approve all those.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
And then I'd make a motion to approve the following appointments of council representatives to the various entities, beginning with the, let's see, Dublin Arts Council? Yeah, they're a little bit out of order, but that's okay. Dublin Arts, Dublin Arts Council Representative will be John, the Dublin Board of Education Council Liaison will be Christina, the Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission Representative is to be Kathy. There's a lot of good dinners there, by the way, yeah. Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission Representative will be Chris, the Northwest Thirty-three Innovative Corridor Group Representative will be Kathy and Jane, and the, the grand prize, the Planning and Zoning Commission Representative will be Ms. Fox, thank you. The Washington Township Board of Trustees Liaison will be Greg, continue to be Greg, and the Dublin Friendship City Association Council Designee will be Christina and John. And that is my motion.
I'll second it.
Anne?
Ms. Amros, Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Okay, I'm supposed to ask if anybody who's on any of the key committees from last year have any comments to make for carryover matters from 2017? If you do have any, speak for now or forever hold your peace.
Admin Committee will need to begin to work right away on goal-setting, the selection of a facilitator, a place to have it, and it's always difficult, facilitators book up very quickly, Michelle, as you know, so that's something that will be, and really getting a date together. We found that doing it earlier in the year is better than later, hopefully sometime in February, when the golf season is not on full tilt, so.
I will start with that tomorrow, and you'll all be receiving emails from me, so we will get those wheels turning. I'll touch base with Dana and work the staff end, and we'll get it going right away, because I think February is the month to have it, so we will make every attempt to do that.
Shortly thereafter, boards and commissions, as they roll around, that's gonna come up, that's typically a March item, so that'll be, and then we also have the review of councils too, folks have direct, our direct reports, which would be City Manager Dana McDaniel and our clerk, Ann Clark. So that is, those pieces will be pulled together, and I'll help you with whatever I can.
Counting on you.
Got it. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Okay, council roundtable, we're gonna just stick with the tradition. Jane?
Sorry, Angel, you gotta deal with me again.
Wait, Dana, was there any staff comments? Did I skip over the sta, I did skip over the staff comments, are there any?
I have a few, if you don't mind.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Should have done that before the committees.
Good evening, members of council. First of all, on behalf of city staff, congratulations to our returning council members and our new council members. That's, we look forward to working with everyone. We've been conducting a council orientation program with Councilmember DeRosa and Councilmember Fox. We hope that that's been helpful and beneficial to date. We know it's ongoing, there's other things that we'll continue to meet on, but certainly, and the council knows this goes for everyone, if there's things that we as staff can do to help orient or catch people up on things, we're, we're happy to do that. Just let us know whatever you need. In your packet, there was a memo relative to the, the library and the parking garage. I had asked staff to put that in there to, to generate and provide the background about those projects. I know for, for most of you, it might be a significant reiteration, but we do expect the bids on the garage and the infrastructure to come forward at your next meeting, depending on how our ongoing evaluation of those go, they're, they look pretty good, so we're hopeful that that will be before you, but I wanted to lean forward and get you that background. And then, just two more quick things. I really want to just take the opportunity to say thanks to staff who worked through the holidays and on the holidays with the, with the weather events that we did experience, and I want to acknowledge them for their personal commitment, dedication, and the sacrifice that takes when you're working on the holidays and the effect that has on family, so I just wanted to publicly acknowledge them for, for keeping up and making it safe for the rest of us enjoy those holidays. And last, I want to thank the group who set up the technology. Now, it's not to say it's perfect yet, we'll have some bugs and things to work out, but working pretty good so far, and of course, some training to happen with this, and Anne Now, it's not to say it's perfect yet, we'll have some bugs and things to work out, but I, working pretty good so far and of course, some training to happen with this and Anne and the team and with, with Team IT will be working with you on that. So that's all I have and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Now we'll skip ahead to council roundtable. Jane?
Well, mainly I just want to say thank you all for the great welcome. I'm so excited about starting this journey with such a great team. And the staff has been unbelievable in orienting us and opening their offices, their, their advice, their mentorship, and Dana, thank you, you have made that so easy and I am, I, we have the best staff any city could ever, ever want. And I'm just so, feel so honored to be sitting up here as a citizen, representing my ward and the rest of the city and just want you to know that I will do my very best and I appreciate all the help that you've offered and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane, welcome. Kathy?
Yes, thank you very much. I will echo Jane's thanks so much for the staff. It is amazing what the city does and how much there is to learn and we appreciate it and we thank you in advance, both Jane and I, for what we know will be a million more questions, but I will say as a citizen to get, to be involved in this, it is an amazing process. My thanks certainly to the family and to the community for all the support and for my fellow council members, they have been fantastic, so I appreciate that very much and looking forward to serving the community and all of you. And I want to say I am so excited about the new technology, I think it's fantastic, so looking forward to that and our lesson. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. John?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the voters for the new and old group of city council members and I like, I'll to rewelcome you, Mayor Peterson, and thank you for your past service. Greg has been wonderful in fulfilling the office of mayor with professionalism, dedication, and diligence. I'd again like to thank our previous council members, Tim Leklider and Amy Seley, for their combined thirty-two years of service to Dublin. Now I'd like to welcome our two newest council members, Jane Fox and Kathy DeRosa. Jane, I'm sure will take the passion and care she feels for the old Dublin area and spread it over the entire city. She has a special empathy for the human person, being a nurse. Her husband is a physician and I predict that this will translate into caring for the general welfare of our citizenry. We have developed over a hundred and thirty miles of walking trails and created a subsidized rec center for the extension of our fellow Dubliners' health, lives, and enjoyment. With a grant of three hundred thousand dollars, in the past, we have offered our citizens free mini physicals, healthy cooking classes, and lectures from some of the foremost minds in medicine. I'm sure with her knowledge, she will translate her gifts to the overall welfare of her neighbors. What greater gift can a government give its citizens than the opportunity of having good health and a long life? So thank you. Kathy comes from a background deep in the American psyche that we all admire. She was raised on a small cattle ranch in Montana and most of us are aware of the hard work and determination of those folks who store hay in the upper parts of barn on a hundred-degree days. Repairing fencing on pasture land, keeping young calves from freezing in sub-zero temperatures, and the care for animals. These are the tough, get-done people who don't ask for a handout but provide one for those in need. She has an extensive work resume in the private sector, punctuated with an MBA from Harvard University. We all welcome our two newest members to the Dublin City Council, both of which have traveled abroad extensively, which is always a big plus for a city that values creativity and is always interested in incorporating new ideas for the betterment of our community from around the world. So thank you both.
Thank you, John, very, very well said. Mike?
Yeah, I've got a lot, a lot of thank yous, but I want to thank Megan especially, she put some extra effort into the residents at Indian Run Hill who had lit my phone up. They got out there several times, they noticed and they were most appreciative, so thank you for that extra effort there. They did not want to slide all the way down into Dublin Road and across into the new road down to the river. They figured they could be all the way at the bottom of the hill with this one, one good slide, so thank you for that and all you do with these. I know you're going to probably have a busy day coming up Friday, Saturday, so thank you. I'd like to thank Angel Muma and the entire finance team for all their professional help in my role as finance chair the last two years and I'm looking forward to working again with you these next two years, so thank you. We've got so many exciting times coming for our new, our new council folks, welcome aboard. I, I think most of us had the opportunity to meet with you one-on-one early on and learned a lot about your families and your history and that's always good to pull that together. But such exciting times, the new library, the pedestrian bridge will be completed in a couple of years and we have an incredibly beautiful area in terms of the park on the river that we will certainly have our fingerprints on here over the next year and a half, two years, so a lot of exciting things happening. Dana, thanks for all you do and assembling the staff that you have over these last three or four years and, and I don't believe we could be where we are without your leadership, especially with all the work at, at Bridge, Bridge Park and, and it's very, very complicated stuff. And Angel, you've been pulled along into the fray with all kinds of new, new mechanisms, so thank you for that. That's all I have.
Christina?